Regular meeting, the day is May 20th, it's 10 o'clock. Before we get started, I wanted to recognize Mayor Craft here from the city of Gulf Shores. So, thank you, Mayor, for being here. Pastor, will you do the invocation and then I ask Commissioner Wall to do the pledge of allegiance.
Be glad to. Bow your head and join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, as the Psalmist reminds us, this is the day that You have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And, Father, we just are so grateful for this beautiful day, just for life itself, the blessing of living in this wonderful part of the world that You blessed us to live in. And so, Father, today, we come before You asking for our leaders at all levels that You would watch over them, You would protect them, You would give them wisdom. We especially pray for our commissioners today as they conduct business and talk about affairs of our county. And, Father, we just pray that You would especially give them the wisdom they need to direct. We pray that everyone who speaks today, everything would be done in a decent and orderly manner. And, Father, we just asked again that You would guide us. We need Your wisdom and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Pastor was from First Baptist Church. Sorry, Pastor, I didn't do that at the beginning. The adoption of the minutes, I've got to read this. So, prior to the adoption of May 6, 2025, meeting minutes, correction for the record that the account number listed in Resolution 2025-110 for the Foley Courthouse Building Repairs and Maintenance Agenda Item CE15. The correct account number is 1005-1993.52310.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of our May 6 meeting, including the changes that we had just, you just read.
Second. All right, got a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Financial, Commissioner Ball?
I make a motion to pay bills.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion in a sec. Any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, we go to the consent item. We've got a denim item, GA1 has been added to the consent. GA1 has been added.
Motion to adopt consent.
Wait, wait, we didn't ratify.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yeah, so, you gotta do that one.
I keep forgetting about that VA2. Commissioner Ball?
No, it's not me.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we ratify. Our interim payments is allowed by policy 8.1.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
I'll re-bring my motion back up to adopt the consent agenda.
Then I'll second it.
All right, got a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right. Frank?
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Frank.
We are going to kind of jump in for the audience that's going to get a little bit off script from the agenda, but we have a very exciting program to unveil for everyone. If you can direct your attention to the screen, we want to formally introduce what's coined as the 30 Cube Program. So, 30 Cube Program is a county municipal transportation infrastructure partnership program. We're going to jump into the details here in a minute, but as we've pointed out, we've been working, back in 2021, the Commission adopted a strategic plan and the number one goal in that strategic plan was tackling our infrastructure needs, transportation infrastructure needs. The number one need we have is connectivity and capacity improvements on our local road system throughout the county. That's building road segments where they don't exist currently, improving turn lanes and capacity improvements around our intersections, what we call our nodes, getting those where they function better. So, we knew what the need was, but we've been working for a few years trying to figure out what's the best way to address those items and how do we, how do we accomplish these goals? How do we complete and get asphalt on the ground where it needs to be? So, through a team effort and through some, some long-range planning, we've coined the 30 Cube Program. So, again, it's a county municipal partnership. What we've found is most of our problem areas is where the county and municipal jurisdictions interface, kind of those, those connection points. So, the 30 Cube Program is locally funded. It's aimed at fostering collaboration with municipalities across the county with the objective of enhancing capacity and connectivity of the local roadway system. The County Commission is designating $30 million to be matched with $30 million in municipal funding for various types of capacity and connectivity projects. So, it's powerful. There is, not only has there never been a program in Baldwin County of this nature, there's never been one in the state of Alabama with this type of opportunity and collaborative effort for transportation at the local level. So, the goal is to have 60 million of these projects either constructed, under construction, or under contract by 2030. That's a very ambitious goal. By partnering, by working with our partners to, to increase funding, we can do a lot of good with $60 million in Baldwin County on local road systems. 30 million by county, 30 million by municipalities by 2030 is how we coined the 30 Cube. Now, I get it before the mathematicians in the room tell us that, that 30 Cube does not 60 million, we get it, but, but I will kind of lay out the, the reasoning behind how we got to our logo. So, the 30 Cube Program is in addition to all other current and traditional programs in place. We're not taking away or cutting some other funding source or funding program to make this one work. This is in addition to everything else we have going, which is very, very powerful. Community impact, projects will be evaluated based on the overall impact and the level of benefit to the regional transportation network. It needs to be, the key word here is regional. The greatest transportation needs, as I mentioned earlier, are along the county municipal jurisdictional boundaries. The program is aimed at improving community traffic issues on local roads regardless of jurisdiction or roadway ownership. That's powerful. Your citizens, our citizens, as we're driving the road, we don't care if we're on a state road or a county road or a city road. That's not determined in, in your decision making to get from A to B throughout the day. You need to go where you need to go. And that generally involves traveling on all three of those jurisdictions. So, this program is focused on local roads. There may be some, some intersection improvements around some state connector routes at those intersections to make our local road system function better, but like I said, from the citizen's perspective, we're, we're focused on, on roadways or issues that matter to them. Okay? Joint county municipal projects, the program offers any municipality the opportunity to voluntarily, that's important, voluntarily partner with the county to improve capacity or connectivity, provided it serves a regional benefit. So, this is an excellent program. We have 14 municipalities in Baldwin County. This is opportunity that has never been available before for even small municipalities up to our largest municipalities to address transportation needs that affect those jurisdictions along with how the county roads interface with those jurisdictions. If there is a road inside, it may be completely inside a city. If it has regional benefit to the overall roadway network, it's fair game under this program. That's powerful. Projects are prioritized by the level of municipal financial commitment, level of project management participation of the city, and the timeliness of project results. That's how we're basing our prioritization. We're trying to get asphalt on the ground in a quick, efficient manner. Minimum of 50/50 cost share, dollar for dollar partnership using local funding. Again, we're not leveraging federal funding or state funding for this program. We're thankful for our federal and state partners, but all of us here know, all of us that's ever worked with state and federal money understands there's a lot of bureaucracy that comes with that, just the nature of the business. We're trying to cut out as much red tape as possible and get things done on the ground quickly for Baldwin County residents. 30 Cube is uniquely innovative. It's the first locally developed and locally funded transportation partnership of this magnitude ever introduced in not only Baldwin County, but the state of Alabama. Only locally funded county municipal transportation partnership program of this magnitude in the nation that we're aware of, and we've done a lot of research, we've not found anywhere in the country that's doing a program like this with transportation local dollars. 30 Cube is uniquely designed to allow municipalities of any size the ability to voluntarily participate and partner, like I said. And through local agency management and funding, 30 Cube is uniquely designed to accomplish significant transportation infrastructure projects in a timely and cost-effective manner by, like I said earlier, avoiding federal and state bureaucracy. Okay. So, that's a little bit about the program. What I'm really pleased to announce is we've got our first project teed up under this program framework. And Brian is loading us a little drawing as he's loading that. So, very pleased to announce that Gulf Shores has stepped up and we've gotten a lot of interest in this program from municipalities across the county. City of Gulf Shores has stepped up, they have seen the value in, in this partnership and they have brought an excellent project to the table. This is the, this is the essence of what we envisioned when this program was, was generated and first was being developed. And, and I can't think of a better project to really kick this program off. So, before I jump into the details of the agenda, I'll direct you to the map. This is Cannon Road 6 and the State Route 59 intersection, kind of the north end of Gulf Shores. Cannon Road 6 runs east and west, but if we focus on the western portion of Cannon Road 6, also known as Oak Road West, there is, the Gulf Shores Sports Plex is down this road, brand-new boat ramp that we just opened up a few weeks ago that's a fantastic facility getting a lot of interest. So, there's a lot of traffic needs along this, this Cannon Road 6 West alignment. So, what we're looking at doing under this program is adding some turn lanes to State Route 59 to make it function better in all directions, but more importantly, look at the additional lanes. We've added capacity. We're basically making a five-lane section just west of the intersection to allow that, that node to function so much better for traffic going, traveling in every direction. So, this is going to be a tremendous project for our citizens. So, a little bit about the project. So, let's jump right into the agenda itself and then we'd like now for Mayor Craft, our opportunity to come up and speak a little bit. So, agenda item before you is the intergovernmental roadway construction agreement with the City of Gulf Shores for certain roadway intersections and improvements. Staff recommendation, approve the intergovernmental roadway construction agreement between the Baldwin County Commission and the City of Gulf Shores to construct roadway and intersection improvements on Cannon Road 6 at State Route 59. The City of Gulf Shores will assume maintenance responsibility after the project is complete. And that would be for the portion of Cannon Road 6 that is currently county maintained. So, again, this is just a very good testament of what a true partnership project should look like. So, with that, Commissioners, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, I just say, I'd like to say this. Thank you and from the city of Gulf Shores, thank you for reaching out to us. And Frank and you and your staff, thank you for putting this together. This is in Rogan.
Do we need a motion?
We will need a motion to approve, we'll need to approve this, but like, before we get too far along, let Mayor, County.
Mayor, if you want to say a few words, more than one.
I do. What an amazing program and we've, like most of the municipalities in this state or in this county, we deal with county roads throughout our city and we've had three, Cannon Road 8, Cannon Road 6, and Cannon Road 4. We've worked together with you and we've taken over eight and four on our nickel and spent it all. Cannon Road 6 was a lot more challenging because of the, on Highway 59 and the issues that we have there. So, the opportunity to work together to solve a problem. Cannon Road 6 is about half and half a sporadic annexation and a lot of in-the-county folks live out there. So, it's a joint problem and this joint solution is exactly the way government should work. And we thank you for recognizing that and putting together something that was really important for us. And I think it will be really a great opportunity going further, further with other municipalities, particularly when they find out the ease of it. For those of us who dealt with state and federal money, it is complicated and lengthy and we've gone through multiple programs. We applied for a grant, got it, and took us three or four years to get to the money and by that time, the project had doubled in price. And so, the good news about this is we've got a plan and it happened quickly and thank you again for doing that and we're excited about that. And I am certain that once other municipalities see this opportunity, you're gonna, this is going to be a very successful project for the, for the county. So, we thank you from Gulf Shores very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I do want to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say that from time to time, we've been approached by different municipalities and, and usually it's, they want the county to pay the whole dime. And so, this has been a great, I know there was multiple minds that went into this and I appreciate our staff for bringing this project forward to us. And what we've always wanted to do when I would talk to different municipalities is let's partner, let's partner. And, you know, sometimes they're completely within side the city limits of, even though it's still a county road or whatever. This is just a way where that everybody has a way to have a part in it and we do appreciate and I love the fact that we can keep the red tape out of it as much as we can. We'll still do everything right through all the processes that we have to do, but as I said at your meeting, Commissioner Gruber and I attended the Gulf Shores Council meeting yesterday. I come from the outside world, not a bureaucrat by trade, and I appreciate people who work for the government, I do. I have a whole different viewpoint on that, but, but government moves slow most of the time and this is an opportunity to us to be able to, most of the time, we know the right thing to do, but there's so many things in, in, in between. So, nobody's going to do anything wrong just because you can do something a little bit faster and I just appreciate this opportunity and thanks to Gulf Shores and for an opportunity to, to kick this off and I am very excited. It's a first come, first served. And so, I hope that the other municipalities will, will see this, even if it's a small project. I've had a couple of small municipalities approach me and they're like, well, we don't have the money to do this and that. And I'm like, well, hey, this is a great opportunity, even if it's a small project, still 50/50. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say, you know, this is probably, you know, starting out was a great one. It's been needed for a long, long time, but, you know, you know, it's, it's the right time and, and looking at the whole concept of this, we've got a lot of roads that we need to connect. And connectivity is what we need to help so that we can move the, the people around in Baldwin County. You know, with our visitors and everything else, it gets a little congested at times and I know several areas that we could use some connectivity and, you know, the parts of our head in the city and parts in the county and then parts are in another municipality. So, I think this, this program is going to make it a whole lot easier for us to get stuff like that taken care of because the municipalities want to do their part, but, you know, they have never partnered up with the county to do this. And I think now we'll be able to accomplish a lot more of our connectivity that we have been focusing on for several years and trying to make it so that it's, we have better connectivity in Baldwin County. And Mayor Craft, thank you so very much for, you know, for you and your city, joining us on this project. I think it's, it's going to be well worth it and again, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, just like I was talking, I can't ever see anybody run this post. They've got me strategically blocked. So, yeah, I appreciate you being our, our first partner in this and like you said, hopefully it will cause a segue into other municipalities that want to take advantage of something like this that, like you said, is going to be quick and it's, and it's going to involve you dealing just directly with our highway department and the county commission and no, no more waiting on, you know, three years' worth of grant monies and that kind of stuff. So, it's a, it's a great instrument to have. I, I just want to thank the, all the minds that put this together. I had no idea that we'd already be talking about a project. I thought it was going to take a time to get some project strength. So, we, we superseded our expectations, I think, and thank you to the City of Gulf Shores for making this happen for us. And I think it's, like you said, Mayor, it's going to be a lot of great things to come. If you got another one coming up, just, just let us know. We'll, we'll be happy to, happy to look at that one, too.
All right, Commissioner?
I make that motion that I was, thought I was going to make earlier, so.
And I'll second the motion.
I got a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Do we need an item number?
I don't see it for, I don't see an item number.
She said no because of Frank already read the recommendation.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Frank's recommendation.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You don't accuse us of any, you don't do so.
Yes, sir. You too, sir.
Bye-bye.
Yep, we're on the presentations next. Go ahead, Commissioner. Baldwin County Beach Safe Week. It was a good turnout yesterday, so.
Well, who wants to have the proclamation? Come on, guys. Y'all weren't shy yesterday.
Yeah. I love that breath.
Just seeing these guys out there, not, maybe not y'all, but the lifeguards out in the water, it was really, really cool. Thank you, guys. So, the proclamation reads, proclaiming the week of May 19 through 26, 2025, as Baldwin County Beach Safe Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Baldwin County represent a world-renowned recreational resource and whereas Baldwin County residents and guests alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for beach and water activities and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season. And whereas the Baldwin County residents and guests alike must remember to check weather and surf conditions daily, know their limitations, swim near a lifeguard, sign up for daily surf condition text alerts, know and heed the beach warning flags, learn how to escape a rip current. a rip current, and know what to do when someone else is in danger. And whereas the Baldwin County Commission recognizes the seven days prior to Memorial Day each year as Beach County Safe Week in conjunction with National Beach Safety Week, and urges all residents and guests to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their families. Now thereafter, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that the week of May 19 through 26, 2025, is hereby set aside as Baldwin County Beach Safe Week in Baldwin County, Alabama, and the Baldwin County Commission joins Gulf Shores and Orange Beach Tourism in their collective efforts to participate in beach safety awareness throughout Baldwin County. Guys, want to say something? Come on, don't be shy. You are being recorded.
So, I mean, when the proclamation was read, a lot of this stuff was already said. But it's really important, this is the start of our summer season. We talked about funding for the 30 for 30 project. Majority of that funding is probably gonna be made over the summertime with people coming to our beaches and visiting. So definitely, City of Gulf Shores, City of Orange Beach, our tourism, the county EMA, we want to make sure that when people are visiting, that they're knowledgeable and aware. I think it's an awesome thing that we're all able to collaborate on this. Ultimately, the beach is supposed to be a fun and enjoying environment. And if we do these little small steps, and each person does their part, we can keep people safe and keep coming back to our beaches. So I just want to appreciate everybody for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this. You know, we have so many dangers there. Like the proclamation says, that it's a joy and a danger as well. And really, if you look at it, there's no overarching agency that controls that. You know, Fire Service has NFPA, the workforce around has NIOSH and OSHA and those types. There's no standard, really, that protects our swimmers, other than us getting the word out and educating people. So we appreciate your cooperation with us. And we reach out to all the businesses and residents and try to urge everybody to spread the word that Orange Beach Gulf Shores Tourism has done a great job of creating this marketing campaign, and we're just trying to support it. So thank you for your part.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of remarks about the Beach Safe Campaign itself. It was born in 2022, and it came, it came into being about the same time that I joined the County Commission. And I've watched it grow, and it's really, really unique, and it's probably the most democratic organization I think I've ever been a part of. We have a lot of partners who could not be here today, ranging from the federal level, National Weather Service, all the way down to Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department, every layer in between, we have representation. And there's no elected leadership, there are no officers. And I want to especially recognize our own Jessica Waters, because the group tends to lean on her, hey, Jessica, it's time to get the band together before spring break. And she goes through a lot of lengths to make all that happen. And the cooperation we have with this is just outstanding. And because we all want the same thing, we want our guests to come home, come here and enjoy our beaches and go home safely, and be planning their next trip while they're still on their way home. So, and then this initiative can help us do that, but we also are very, very dependent on the media, our friends in the media, to help us spread the word, especially to markets not local to southwest Alabama. When we can get our message out to Birmingham and Huntsville markets and even further north, that just helps us prepare people before they get here, because know before you go is the slogan for the campaign. And if we can make people aware of what the surf flags mean, and how to recognize rip current, we can keep our guests safe and send them home ready to come back next year.
Get a photo? Anybody else want to speak?
Well said. Well, the proclamation, before we do the vote, I just want to say this, and if y'all want to say anything, you're more than welcome. I know a lot of them have already left, but one thing we didn't mention, or they didn't mention, was the first responders that go out there and put their lives in danger, you know, to save somebody. So I just want to recognize them, too, for putting their lives in danger every day. And so I just wanted to say that before we do the vote.
I want to also say that yesterday, when they did a demonstration of how they go out and rescue the swimmers that are in distress, I had, you know, the whole thing is to save people's lives, including the first responders. And my question was, how many times do you have to do this? And I think, if one of you is still here, y'all did this just, you did it like five times just last week, or something like that, right near the fishing pier there, by the lodge, the state pier. So that's amazing. You know, it only takes a second. Now, growing up, we didn't call it rip current, it was the undertow. And I think just that sound of undertow, it's put the fear in me. I didn't want to get anything past my knees in that water, even when I was a little kid. But I didn't know what a rip current was, I thought it was the undertow. And my mom always said, that'll take you under, and you ain't coming back, you know? So I think that people that come here, they have no idea, if you're born and raised here and you don't know what it is, somebody hadn't been parenting you very well. But you can't help not knowing when you go somewhere that you're not from here and you don't understand that. So I'm so thankful for this campaign, and, you know, they got all kind of, got a koozie there yesterday, and stickers, and I think from talking to a lot of the, the tourism has done a fantastic job of putting this in. Of course, I mean, I live here, so I don't go down there renting places myself, I can't afford it, number one. But the second thing is, people tell me all the time that it's in there, it's in the condos, it's everywhere. So we just have to hope and pray that people will pay attention. And the county is also looking forward to, we got, trying to get some markings down in Fort Morging on our water inlets to help people even more. We're working on something, trying to get the funding straight on that. And hopefully that'll happen sooner than later. So all in all, you can't do enough. If it saved one life, it's worth every bit of it. So, all right. With that, I'll make a motion, we'll prove it, unless somebody else gets something to say.
All right, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, next is DA 2, proclamation Emergency Medical Services Week.
This is a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 18 through 24, 25, as Emergency Medical Service Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses, injuries, and whereas the Emergency Medical Service fill healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including prevention medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Service System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, training members of the public, and others out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service Team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of accomplishment of emergency medical service provided by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, mukel claimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that the week of May 18 through 24 is hereby set aside as Emergency Medical Service Week in Baldwin County.
Anybody that knows me knows I'll talk. I don't always make sense when I do it, but I'm gonna try. First, thank you for recognizing National EMS Week. It's the 51st year, 1974, President Carter signed it into existence. So I made some notes. Had them on paper, but of course, y'all know I lost it. EMS is the type of healthcare that you really can't learn in a textbook. We treat people where they are, as they are, in all of their messy, beautiful, heartbreaking, the reality of their lives. We do so without labs or x-ray, depending on education and experience, and at times just gut instincts, to provide the highest level of care to our communities with only the information that we're able to gather in a few seconds when we first meet a patient. What sets us apart from the rest of healthcare isn't just the type of medicine that we provide, but it's the mission. We have the intimate honor of being someone's worst-day person, and we have the privilege of seeing humanity unfiltered. Some of the things that we've done to make EMS better since the last time you guys saw me in Baldwin County is that we've added a National Association of EMTs Training Center, which allows us to teach some specialized classes that we were sending people to Jackson, Mississippi, or over into Florida to take. We've added a lot of new technologies. Telemedicine was mentioned in the proclamation. Who knew that we'd ever be standing here letting a doctor look at somebody on FaceTime? But we've also, for the last, wow, 20 years, 21 years now, we've been sending EKGs to hospitals by passing cath labs, and we did it 10 years before it became the standard here in Baldwin County. So, other things that we did, we finally got back to full staffing post-COVID, which is amazing. We've added 10 new ambulances since August of last year, and even a third helicopter, which encompasses Baldwin County a little bit better from the east side. Since the last time you guys saw me, I will ravel all day if you let me, so I'm just gonna stop there, and again, say thank you for recognizing the men and women that provide EMS here in Baldwin County. Do you guys want to say anything?
And the air service and stuff, you know, that's provided, it hasn't been in many years, and it's outstanding. Yeah, they do a great job. I mean, and they're the, they got that extra advantage of getting there quicker when you have somebody that really needs.
The first half of my career, we didn't have that. And then for the last nine years, 10 years, we've had a helicopter based here in Baldwin County, and then now we've got three. So it's definitely a benefit.
Just get a picture. Anybody want to say something before they leave?
I'd just like, you know, say, I want to thank all these people that are in the emergency medical field. You know, you never know when something's gonna happen. And by having somebody that can help you, you know, it makes a big difference. So I want to thank each and every one of them for their service into this. And you want me to go ahead and make the motion?
Well, I was just gonna also acknowledge my thanks to what y'all do. It's great to start to see a presence of more ambulance services all throughout the community. I've even lost count of how many we got in Baymanat now, but it's, it's great to see them running when it used to not be that way. So thank you all again for what you're doing. Like Commissioner Gruber said about the helicopter service, that's been a great asset to our community. I'm now adding a third one. I mean, the way the county's growing, that really does help out and gets people there in time of need, especially when they're encountering some serious medical conditions such as strokes and stuff like that. So thank you all for what you do, again.
Thank you, guys. I did not realize until you guys just told us that there's a third helicopter now. That's amazing. That's one thing that, you know, we get a lot of, we get a lot of complaints about growth, and growth in itself is not a problem. Unplanned, unchecked growth is a problem. And when you have growth, you have opportunity. And we have opportunity for good healthcare, and you're just another part of it. And, you know, I think when people move to certain places, that's something they look for. And we have that available here in Baldwin County, not just through you guys, but through the whole network that you deal with. We have decent healthcare, good healthcare, and you don't have that everywhere. You can just go not too far, I hate to pick on other counties, but they don't have it. And we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I remember when I first got on the commission, I met with Brad, and he was saying he was shorthanded, and is there anything that the county can do? But I'm glad that you're at staff now, so that's an awesome feeling, I'll bet you. But I just want to say thank you for all the emergency medical services that y'all, that y'all perform. So thank you all.
I'll second Mr. Gruber.
Mr. Chairman Warren, I'd like to make a motion proclaiming the week of May 18 through 24 as Emergency Medical Service Week in Baldwin County.
Got a motion? Commissioner Baldwin, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right. Deidra? Employees of the Quarter.
Good morning.
It is once again my honor to be able to present the employees of the quarter for our first quarter of 2025 this year. Of course, the goal of the Baldwin County Commission's Employee of the Quarter program is to publicly recognize our employees who go above and beyond the call of service, and we want to acknowledge their accomplishments and contributions to Baldwin County Commission as a whole. It also offers an opportunity for all employees within the county to recognize their peers, for their exceptional job performance, as well as offering the citizens an opportunity to recognize county employees who exhibit exceptional customer service. So as county employees, we are all here to serve the public as well as each other, whether we meet citizens face-to-face every day, or for those that work behind the scenes. We love to hear about how our employees make a difference, so we always encourage the public to go to the county's webpage, and there's a link there to nominate employees of the quarter, so we would love to hear from the public more. So, without further ado, this quarter, we actually have three recipients, however, one was unable to come at the last minute, John Harville with our CIS department. We will save his for a later date, so I know he's bummed about missing that. So, with our Highway Department, we have Mr. Mark Ackerman to come up to present Mr. Michael Campbell.
This is, again, as I always say this, and I mean this sincerely, I'm so appreciative to Deidra and her team to be able to have this program to recognize outstanding employees, and Michael is one of those outstanding employees. To give you a little background on Michael, he's been with us 12 years, and he has To give you a little background on Michael, he's been with us 12 years, and he has really taken over and elevated our licensing agreements. This is any type of work that's performed on our county rides of way goes through Michael, so he's the one that's gonna be looking at that. So, to give you all some perspective, last year, I think we had a total of around 300-plus permits that were issued for utility work. With the fiber incentives and the initiatives that have been instituted in Montgomery, we're already approaching 500, I think, 500 permits for this year alone for expanding the fiber networks and to make sure that every resident in Ballin County has access to high-speed internet. So every one of those permits, if it's in the county, go through Michael. So, and I've always, when we do these, I always like to have somebody who works directly over that individual or with that individual to talk a little bit about what they mean to them as well as the organization. And I've asked Josh to come up and speak a little bit on Michael before we give him a chance to do this formal presentation.
Good morning. Nobody likes to see construction going on, wherever it is, whatever the project may be, it's just a hassle for everybody. One thing that Mike and I have been able to do is get in front of some of these projects we know are coming and look at these utility permits, the applications that are coming in, and determine if the work can be done there in relation to the project going on. So what we're trying to not have happen is people working on top of each other, delaying projects, things of that nature, because the general public only sees construction going on. They don't know that it's utility installation, they don't know that it's a drainage project or whatever the case is. So in doing that, Mike has also taken the reins over our county road 12 and 65 intersection improvements. He's overseeing that project as well on top of his day-to-day operations. So, he's taken on a lot this year, and he's ran with it, and we're thankful to have him.
You get the wrong one?
It's okay. I can adjust.
There we go, it happens.
You are Michael Campbell, congratulations, Mike.
I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate being recognized for this, and I'm hoping to continue working with everybody and maybe improve some more stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mike. We're gonna do pictures in just a minute, so hang around.
Don't leave. Don't leave yet.
Let me check this next one. Next, with the highway department, we have Mr. Timothy Butler.
So, I asked Tucker to come up with, or Jeremy come up with Tim. So Tim is part of our 300 barn, Tim. This is the team that serves South Ballin and is based in Foley. He's been with us 19 years and is really instrumental in our dirt road paving projects in South Ballin County, and has been a part of many of the dirt road paving projects over the last 19 years, and we're very, very happy to recognize Tim. And Jeremy is fairly new, as our 300 barn superintendent is doing a fantastic job, so I've asked Jeremy to come and speak to what Michael, I mean, I'm sorry, wrong one, what Tim does for our team, and what, how important it is to have a member like him as part of our team, and we're very appreciative of what he does.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Timmy is our senior operator that has been with the county for almost 19 years. He's a part of our dirt road building projects and has built many of roads in Area 300. Timmy does an excellent job at everything he does and helps train the less experienced on how to functionally operate equipment. He goes above and beyond the tasks of duty, making sure everything is precise and accurate. Timmy's loyalty and passion for the barn is inspiring to all the crew members and our supervisors at our barn. It's an honor for us to have Timmy Butler as a valuable member to our facility.
All right.
We're gonna do the picture.
Come on, Tim.
Thank you all very much for recognizing what I do.
Thank you.
Tim had a whole speech prepared.
All right, one, two, three. Okay, thank you, guys.
Congratulations, Tim, thank you.
Commissioners, any comments on that, on the employees of the quarter?
Thank you, guys. I mean, I guess you're so anxious to get back to work.
Before y'all leave, I'd just like to say thank you, thank you for what y'all do for Ballin County.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you, Tim.
Absolutely, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Michael. You know, we've got some great employees in this county, and they stand out on things that they do, you know, and it's an honor to be able to, be able to recognize those individuals that are getting these awards, and it's just a great thing. Thank you.
We don't have to do anything with that, do we? Employee of the Quarter. All right, we go to public hearing, that's next. Lovely. Case number Z25-07.
This is a zoning request from RA Rural Agricultural to RSF2 Single Family. The subject property is located in Planning District 22. It's north of County Road 20 and west of Stuckey Road. The total acreage is 44.25. It is currently zoned rural agricultural, and the applicant is asking for RSF2 residential single family for future residential development. Here you can see the subject property is surrounded by RA zoning, RSFE, and there's also some RSF1 to the south. Here, there is also an existing subdivision to the south that is zoned RA. This area was zoned after the subdivision was built, but it conforms to the RSF2 size lots. The future land use map designates this area as having moderate development potential, which aligns with the RSF2 zoning. The applicant for the subject property had requested for this property and several other parcels to the northwest to be rezoned. Staff had a negative recommendation due to a significant portion of the property being covered in wetlands, leading the applicant to withdraw the application. After several meetings with the applicant and staff, the applicant chose to choose a smaller area and leave the wetlands and the floodway out of the request, and staff is recommending approval from RA to RSF2. The planning commission did recommend denial 5 to 3.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the staff?
I guess I do have a question that I did not ask sooner, because it kind of just hit me when you said that there is an existing subdivision that was there prior to zoning.
Yes.
But when zoning came in, they chose RA?
It might have been happening at the same time. Staff didn't realize, but yes, that subdivision to the south is zoned RA. Many of those lots are RSF2 or smaller size.
Well, there's always non-conforming lots in place whenever you bring zoning in, but it looks like the general consensus of this area is they wanted to keep it rural and less dense.
There is some RSF2 to the east of the creek, right there.
Is that the brighter yellow?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all. Okay.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one person signed up, who's the applicant, it's John Farley.
All right, Mr. John Farley. And before you come up, you can come on up here, but I just want to give some points, key points to remember. Just identify yourself, where you're from, what's your address, stay on topic, be respectful of others, maintain decorum, and just be factual, be concise.
Sure. Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, yeah. I'm John Farley, and I actually live in Alabaster, Alabama, and so we spend a lot of time in this area, and in this case, this property is significant to us because these are family friends, so it's a personal property that we're working with alone. And so this has been, of course, this is a snapshot, and it's always hard to kind of figure out what you want to say in a moment like this, but it's been a two-year process that we started working on the property and making sure that we had all our proverbial ducks in a row, and so, you know, we did come to the staff with a larger project in mind, excuse me, and of course, after many meetings and discussions and watching what, you know, the zoning was passing and the county commission was passing, we adjusted that. You know, one of the things with this 40-acre tract or 45 acres is even in the future land use plan, that's what it's designated for, you know, we do have existing subdivisions in the area that conform to that. You know, what we're looking at is not a garden home situation, we're looking at the 20,000-square-foot lots, excuse me, even though RSF2 can be 15,000, obviously, we're not doing sewer, so this can be 20,000 square foot. So we were looking at that half-acre lot, that was our plan for the community. That seems to be what people are wanting more of instead of the garden home types, plus it's more fitting for that area. So we took the time to sit down with everybody, make sure that, you know, we had done our homework on the infrastructure, preliminary traffic studies and all that, which I know that doesn't pertain to zoning. We're just looking at the zoning criteria, which, after many meetings, you know, we did, we were able to conform to that and come up with an agreement that the staff and unfortunately, the planning commission didn't see it that way, and we were a little shocked during the final meeting because we seemed to veer off into everything other than zoning, which there were questions about traffic and infrastructure and things, which, you know, had been a couple of cases before, you know, the folks had been reminded that that's not what we're here to focus on. We're here to focus on, does the property conform to the zoning and the area? So we were a little shocked with that, but we still think that we have a great development and, you know, that it is beneficial for the community, and being that we've been able to address all the other issues, you know, we would just love the opportunity to be able to address the traffic and infrastructure as we move forward to the subdivision stage. You know, again, from our preliminary situation, you know, we're not seeing there to be issues, you know, everybody, you know, the typical reactions are, hey, the traffic is terrible already, we don't have the infrastructure, but from our preliminary traffic study, you know, we're not seeing that. I mean, obviously, two times a day, in any town with a red light, you're gonna have traffic, school and work, that's just a reality. So, you know, we'd just like the opportunity, again, we think we've got a great development and something that will be beneficial for the area, and we would just love to move forward and be able to present, you know, our plans to the folks, the staff there with the subdivisions, and be able to show them what we have and move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Jay, that didn't, that might not have signed up? Is anybody in the audience that didn't sign up that wants to speak on this case?
Someone else has signed up.
All right. Close the public hearing. Commissioners? Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we approve the case number Z25-07. Jim and Don, that here for the LC.
Property rezoning.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
We got comments or discussion.
Any further discussion on this?
Commissioner Underwood seems like she's thinking about something.
I'm always thinking about something. I would just like to say that I think that this is, when I look at the map and the zoning that is in place, and I'm not looking at traffic and all that other kind of stuff, I know the difference between zoning and subdivisions, is that this is a turning point. You're either gonna, you're either gonna go one way or another with this area, and I feel like that this citizen-driven process that we have, the county commission didn't put this on there, the citizens came in and asked us for that, and just because there's non-conforming lots, doesn't mean that they're zoned that way. They can only do what they are zoned to do, and so I just feel like adding the density into this area of even an RSF2 is a little bit more than, you know, you can make it work, make it work, you gotta do whatever you gotta do. A little bit concerned with the comment about septic tank so near water, although sometimes sewer gives me concerns, too, but I just, I don't know, I'm just really concerned about, there's RSFE near it, I know down the road by, what's that creek, Hammock? Hammock, is that where the?
The Hammock Creek is to the east.
Is that where, is that where the RSF2 is?
Yes.
I guess I just have reservations about, you know, jumping from, regardless of the non-conforming, every non-conforming lot is not, that's near there, is not zoned residential except for the RSFE, which is a minimum square footage of 80,000 square feet, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
That's correct.
Which is almost two acres, whereas you could end up with almost, I mean, if you chose to do sewer, you could put almost, you know, kept 15,000 square foot lots, which, I mean, it's not super dense, but you're out there in the rural Ballin County, so I guess I do have reservations about the, and I think that sometimes staff is put into a situation, things could go either way, and it's not personal, so.
Any other, any other discussion? All right, hearing none? I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. So the motion failed. All right, case number Z25-20.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is case Z2520, the Tarazza's property rezoning. Their request is to rezone from RSF1 to RR. Here's a location of the property within the county. The property is located north of Woodpecker Road and east of County Road 55 in the Silver Hill area. It's in Planning District 12. It's approximately one acre, and the current use is residential. Their request is to rezone to convert an existing shed into a welding shop. Here are the property images as well as the adjacent property images, the locator map and the site map. As you can see, the subject property is surrounded by residential zoning of RSF1 as well as a residential land use. The future land use map designates this area as primarily a moderate development potential. This is for moderately dense residential environments, consisting primarily of single-family homes. The proposed RR zoning accommodates the rural areas of the county and protects the character of that area. Therefore, the rural zoning request for a light industrial use would not be compatible with the land uses in the vicinity, nor would it conform to the master plan. So the staff's recommendation of the rezoned request from RSF1 to RR is denial. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So y'all's request is denial? Okay.
Recommendation denial, yes, sir.
Sorry, recommendation for denial. And he's just wanting to put a, say that again?
A welding shop.
A welding shop.
Mm-hmm.
And he just wants to put a welding shop, okay. The future land use map designates this area as primarily a moderate development potential. This is for moderately dense residential environments, consisting primarily of single-family homes. The proposed RR zoning accommodates the rural areas of the county and protects the character of that area. Therefore, the rural zoning request for a light industrial use would not be compatible with the land uses in the vicinity, nor would it conform to the master plan. So, the staff's recommendation of the rezoned request from RSF1 to RR is denial. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, y'all's request is denial. Okay.
Recommendation denial, yes, sir.
Yes, sorry. Recommendation for denial. And he's just wanting to put a, say that again, what?
A welding shop.
A welding shop.
Mm-hmm.
And he just wants to put a welding shop, okay.
Could you put the map up there again? Yes, ma'am. Not that one, that one. Okay.
Is this gonna be like a business for him?
Yes, he will.
Personal use, welding?
This would be for business, he would have outside employees.
And he owns that whole parcel, correct?
Yes, mm-hmm.
And he just wants a little section?
Can staff enlighten me on basis for denial? Say it again. Can you enlighten me on why staff recommended denial?
Well, this is one of those cases, if you look at, you know, the future land use plan, all the uses around it, you know, this is an area that's zone residential, it's got residential growth all around, it's planned for future residential growth, so going into a rural designation in the middle of a residential district is kind of the outlier, and it would, you know, kind of not conform to everything going on around it.
Is there any other way to achieve what he's wanting to do?
Not in the current RF1 zoning. So, that's the main thing. And there are home occupation, things that can be done in R1, and we would have to explore how he maybe could make that fit, but that would be his only real route is to have it as a home occupation, which has some size limitations and things like that.
Are there other home-based businesses in the area that are grandfathered in?
I'm trying to remember, there's another area in this general portion of the county that has a lot of this going on, it's a residential area that has other HVAC. You know, there's a lot of kind of typical home business, HVAC is one, welding is one, where they kind of use their shop as their basis, where they, because all their work is off-site, you know, on another site somewhere.
On extract, yeah, but not necessarily welding.
Welding is one of those that kind of goes.
It could be building things there, you could have.
In a different area, it has nothing to do with this property, but in a different area, we have another similar situation where it's causing some noise issues and things because it's in the middle of a residential neighborhood, yeah.
I know, I've gotten several complaints from this area about kids playing in the street, but I hadn't gotten a complaint about that. I think that's the street. I could be wrong.
What's the whole parcel again? How many acres do you remember, Ms. Corey?
It's about one acre.
So, it's one acre that he wants to rezone. What is the total amount that?
It's one acre.
It's one acre.
Mm-hmm.
I guess what I'm, I get, let me ask that question again. How much property does he own right there, that parcel? That whole parcel, do you know? Because he's wanting to rezone one acre out of that big parcel.
No, there's, it's a small, looking at the locator map, that one, I believe, is one acre. And I think, I'm not sure if he owns the parcel around it.
Okay, I'm just by looking at the RSF1 with the picture.
You don't see any red lines, you only see blue, right? Okay, or whatever color that is, blue-green?
Okay, all right.
Well, if that was the case, then there's piece of his, there's part of his driveway not in there and some outbuilding or something.
Hang on, I will get to you in just a minute.
Okay.
Commissioners, y'all got any more questions for Ms. Corey?
Is that a mobile home park there?
Yes.
Just to the, to the west?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, RMH, I'm sorry, I could have looked at that map.
Any more questions for Ms. Corey? All right. Open up the public hearing. I had, on my sheet, I had to, is there another person, Jay?
No, these are for other cases. There's no one signed up, but it sounds like the applicant is here, yeah.
Does anybody that wants to talk about this case that didn't sign up? Come on up, sir. Just state your name and your address and, you've got three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Arturo Tarazas, I live in Silver Hill, and I'm the owner of the place. And I was asking her how, if I own more than that acre, and yes, I do own 8.7 acres. The whole thing behind, all the way, next to the trailer park.
Sure.
See, I own the whole thing, all the way back. We see it's 9.7 acres together. But yeah, she's right, it's just one acre is what I'm looking to rezone. That's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else on this case? Nobody else signed up, case that didn't? All right, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Are there any buffer requirements between this request and RSF1?
No.
So, that presents a, that's one of the things that's difficult, because the county doesn't have the ability to put in any kind of noise, and the only, only way you can even possibly buffer that is with buffers.
Paintings or events.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right?
I just, I'm just debating, I mean, he owns the whole property and he's got one acre inside of that and wants to be rezoned to do, have a little business of a welding shop. If it's going to be welding, I don't think, you know, yes, he's going to be building things and making things and doing projects for other people.
I think what it is with, it's kind of similar to what we experienced, even though this is not a major road like 104, it's where do you want businesses located? Do you want businesses located at the nodes, or do you want businesses to be scattered all throughout the county? And that's, that's kind of part of the guided growth is, and I believe that's the reason why. And it's complicated.
It is complicated.
It's always complicated.
It's hard to tell a man that he can't do a business at his home.
But it's also, you have to do your homework when you buy places and stuff. I know, it's just, it's just, it's complicated.
All right. Commissioners, I have a motion?
I just, I want to make one more statement.
Go ahead.
Because we're dealing, I'm not saying we're dealing, so there's something like this in an unzoned area that has come across my desk a few times, and same industry, welding, in unzoned area, and it's in the area of residential. And it's caused a lot of issues. And, you know, I think when you own property, especially like this, that you're in a residential neighborhood, and if businesses start popping up in the middle of residential neighborhoods and future residential neighborhoods, it's just, you know, this is the, this is almost the timeframe where probably if something like this is going on to start a business, you would need to get a storefront somewhere or something when it comes to having a business in the middle of a sub, like a residential area. So, it does not, it doesn't conform with what we set up for our future land use and all that kind of stuff. So, I just know that in another area of the county where a welding place is causing a lot of problems for neighbors.
I think there's a difference between welding and welding shops and welding business. We're a farm, we have welding equipment because sometimes things break, but we're not a welding business. So, it's totally different than what you can expect, so there's no more, I mean, I don't know if you're calling for a motion yet.
And I would say, I mean, Commissioner Ball, you're correct, we're dealing with similar issues in unzoned and zoned areas, and luckily, in zoned areas, we have different ways we can kind of manage it, but, you know, we don't have noise ordinances or the buildings that have noise ordinances, which is.
Well, like Commissioner Underwood said, the buffer's the biggest drawback that it's not required, so.
Right.
That's the.
The other thing to think about too is when rezoning cases, you know, I know this specific owner is wanting to do, you know, a welding shop, but when you rezone something to whatever district in this case.
Whatever's available.
Whatever's available. And RR actually allows pretty much everything in our zone, every allowable use through a conditional use permit. So, it's a very, it's probably our most permissible zoning district we have in the county.
Sloper slope.
Yeah, it is sloper slope, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we deny this.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next case, Z25-22.
All right, this is case Z25-22, the Curtis property. The request is to rezone from RR to B3. Here's a location of the property within the county. The property is located at the intersection of County Road 26 and Grantham Road in the Foley area. It's in Planning District 21. The total acreages of the pens is approximately 2.1 acres, and it is currently vacant. The rezone is requested for office warehouse use as well as a drone business. Here's the locator map and the site map. The property to the north is RR and a dirt pit. To the south, we see RA and agricultural use. There's an RV park to the east, and then we have a dirt pit to the west, and it's zoned RSF1. Here are the adjoining property images. In terms of the staff analysis, there have been minimal changes in the area following the adoption of zoning in this district. Most of the adjacent properties are zoned for agricultural use or residential use, so that proposed change to a commercial use would not be compatible with the adjacent zonings or their use. And I've included a map that shows the nearest commercial zoning as well as what is around the subject properties. And then here's our future land use map, showing primarily ideal conservation or conservation potential for the properties. And staff's recommendation of this request from RR to B3 is denial. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Is, since RR is so vast, why is there a request for a B3? That just doesn't make any sense to me. And there's a whole lot of things in B3 that you wouldn't want in this area, so I get the denial recommendation.
And I do want to mention, Commissioners, that his proposed uses of office warehouse and what's akin to a camera or Photoshop would be allowable with commission site plan approval in his current zoning.
Was this property rezoned several years ago?
Yes.
It was supposed to be for a mobile home park or something like that?
I believe so. I think RV park or something.
It was previously zoned RV2, and now it got rezoned to RR.
RR, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
Commissioner, we do have the owner signed up to speak.
Okay, public hearing, okay. All right, well, I'll say my question. I guess my question's gonna be, why are you wanting B3 when you can do what you want in RR? So, I'd like to hear that. Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Corey?
No.
Hearing none. Open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Scott Curtis, the property owner, signed up to speak.
All right, Mr. Scott.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
Buddy, ladies. To answer that question, I have different tenants come in there, then they are approved to do different businesses out of that location, is why I want the B3. So, basically, here is an approach, just what's in the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, that's the main reason, my concern of getting the B3 is when different tenants come through, that they're allowed and not having to go through a process to what they want to do there when I lease the space out to them. Because I think that is true, it's allowed in RR, the office complexes.
Mm-hmm, it is.
But that's the reason B.
Already checked before today.
Huh?
Already checked that out before today, I do my homework.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the reason why. I mean, I have seen some people come through, was putting a golf thing, they could have done it in RR, and they went to B3. And I've seen it come through, I don't come in here that much. I'm not trying to be a hassle to, that's, you know, I just want to be protected to where I spent a lot of money, that when people come in and want to rent, they can do their business there. And I guess the reason I look at that area, it's not up there, but the surrounding businesses is dirt pits all around me that pay taxes, operational businesses. They're not zoned that way, but their current use, and that should make a difference of what in the area, what the use is of land and how you request for zoning, my understanding. So, that's just kind of where I'm standing on my position.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I mean, you've still got 41 seconds, but.
Anything else you want to add?
No, just that the understanding, the businesses around there are commercial, behind me is commercial. I have letters from a retired sheriff that supports this, of I own 10 lots there, and he owns one of them, and another gentleman, and they support it. There's no neighbors, we've never had nobody come in and, you know, not want us to do that corner. I know every corner in the county can't be zoned, B3 or upper commercial, but I feel like that area is a truck route. I just think there's a lot of reason why just that little area right there could possibly qualify for B3.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else that wants to talk on this case, speak on this case that didn't sign up? Hearing none? Close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we accept staff's recommendation for denial.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion and a second for denial. Any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second for denial. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, nay. All right, motion carries for denial. Case number TA25-02, amendments to the Ballin County zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a follow-up. If you all recall, we had our zoning ordinance text amendment a couple of months ago. And a little bit of the background, as you recall, the planning commission recommended approval of the previous text amendment that included some changes to the local provisions of District 26. However, when it got here, you know, there was rightfully some concern about how much public involvement from the Point Clear community had been and understanding about what, what the proposal really meant for the local provisions of District 26. So, it was removed from the previous text amendment, and then since that time, we did have a town hall meeting with the citizens of Point Clear. Frank, myself, and Commissioner Underwood attended. It was a really good meeting, had some good feedback, and we actually opened it up to them for about three weeks to let them have an opportunity to kind of digest the presentation and give us some feedback on what they thought. And all the comments we heard back were very positive and supportive, I really liked where we were going with the PRD regulations as a whole, what we now require for planned residential developments. And this would be out of character to continue adding, put a B 3 here. It is, it is, it's just not, it's totally against everything that you would do if you're looking for planned growth. So, okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second for denial. Any more discussion? All in favor, signed by by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Any nays, nays. All right, motion carries for denial. Case number TA 25-02, Amendments to the Ballin County Zoning Ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a follow-up. If you all recall, we had our zoning ordinance text amendment a couple of months ago. And a little bit of the background, as you recall, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the previous text amendment that included some changes to the local provisions of District 26. However, when it got here, you know, there was rightfully some concern about how much public involvement from the Point Clear community had been in understanding about what, what the proposal really meant for the local provisions of District 26. So, it was removed from the previous text amendment, and then since that time, we did have a town hall meeting with the citizens of Point Clear. Frank, myself, and Commissioner Underwood attended. It was a really good meeting, had some good feedback, and we actually opened it up to them for about three weeks to let them have an opportunity to kind of digest the presentation and give us some feedback on what they thought. And all the comments we heard back were very positive and supportive. I really liked where we were going with the PRD regulations as a whole, what we now require for planned residential developments, and then also what specifically we were going to allow to the local provisions of District 26 to have in Point Clear. So, it was a good process to go back and kind of revisit all that. In the meantime, while we were going through all that, we found one other little thing that we added to the cleanup. There were some kind of mistakenly, a couple of our local business districts did not allow a fitness center gym use, which is kind of you would want it in those districts. So, we quickly cleaned that up, and as part of this, it's a pretty minor thing, but just to bring your attention to that, we did add that use back in here. So, going forward, the language, I'm not going to read it again because it's the same thing y'all heard last time, but it's, but basically, the, in essence, what it allows is PRDs are going to be allowed in District 26. However, there's some special provisions, and they have to be at least 250 contiguous acres, and half of which has to be open space, and half of it has to be usual outdoor open space, such as golf courses, equestrian facilities, country clubs, things like that that fit the character of District 26 community. So, again, we had all positive comments on that. Additionally, we just updated the B 1 and B 2 districts to allow fitness center gym, so that, so I know there was probably about 40 pages of zoning ordinance in there, but it was really just because of the, the use table was so long. So, but it was a simple add, just saying that the fitness center gym use should be allowed in B 1, B 2, but would be allowed under a conditional use permit, because we would need to kind of look at that a little closer. It shouldn't just be allowed blanket by right. We would need to look at the site plan and make sure it conforms to the surrounding uses. But that's, that's the summary of what we have. Planning Commission did recommend to the County Commission to approve this proposed text amendment, and staff recommends approval as well. Be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner.
Look, thanks for your help with this. When I stated back when we removed it from the rest of the zoning ordinance, was that it may be what they want, but we're, and it sounds like that it is, and the reassurance that they have in this project, it's a fantastic-looking project, and it sounds contrary to what I like to say, but government does move slow. Sometimes we have to slow it down a little bit further, but I think all in all, we've got it back on track, and the people in that area are very thankful for the opportunity to, to be engaged. So, thank you, and thank you for your help with that, okay?
Thank you, Jay. Open up the public hearing.
We didn't have anybody sign up.
Did anybody sign up? Does anybody want to talk about this case that didn't sign up?
I just had a few questions.
Will you come on up here for a minute? You have three minutes. Please state your name and where you live.
My name's Heather DeLapp. I live at 492 Boulder Creek Avenue, Boulevard in Fairhope. I just had a couple of questions, and maybe in the previous meetings, these were answered, but how will the 250 acres impact density? Like, how many, how many houses will be allowed to be built? Do you all know?
It all depends on what they apply for. This is just a zoning...
Yeah, this is just the text amendment.
So, no density discussions at this point?
No.
The other question I had was just like, what environmental studies have been done? Just because, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure you guys are aware that golf courses, golf courses can cause a lot of pollution with the pesticides. Last week, the Journal of American Medical Association, JAMA, released an article showing that if you live within one to three miles of a golf course, you're double, twice as likely to develop Parkinson's disease. So, I just don't know where that is in all this, and I was just curious. It can also contaminate the groundwater. I mean, I know this isn't popular to ask, but I'm in the real estate business, so I mean, it doesn't help my business, but these are just some things I am curious about, because they can have lasting impacts on the Mobile Bay and other watersheds, and I just would like to know what your, you know, response is to that.
Honestly, I mean, that would come into play if there's wetlands and those kind of things, and we do have an environmental planner on staff that stays on top of that kind of stuff. And staff, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so this, this item here is just amending the zoning ordinance. So, there's, this is not specific for any development. Now, there is a development being proposed, but it has really nothing to do with, with this. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment. But all of those environmental studies and all of that comes into play with each development that comes, you know, as they apply.
So, they remain to be done at this point?
Right.
Okay.
This just gives them the opportunity, because prior to that, there was no planned
residential developments even allowed in Planning District 26. And the fact that it is 250 acres, is that right?
It's right.
Minimum?
549, I think.
That means you can't, but it's a minimum of 250. That means you can't come in and ask for a PRD for 10 acres or something like that.
And to answer the density question, the density is regulated by the underlying zoning district. The PRD is just an overlay district, so whatever the underlying zoning classification is would, would set what the allowed density would be.
So, would you know what it would be then based on that, or?
Each site would be different, so it just depends on what...
Okay, those are just some of my questions.
Your questions are not, like, they're just, they're too early yet, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Because this is just...
Good questions.
Yeah, they're not bad questions, but just, you know...
Well, I just know a lot of people in the community are, you know, they feel like their voices aren't heard, so I just, there's a few things I'd like to be, you know, kept in mind, just for our environment.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else that didn't?
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Veronica Bishop. I live in Barnwell. I'm very fortunate to be seventh generation from there. My family has a business from there, and like Heather, I'm a full-time Realtor. I think a lot of discussion is going on about this development. I know that's not why we're here now, but the gentleman mentioned that he had spoke to people in Point Clear. I just want to know if there's been any surveys or anything that's documented, anything that can, you know, show support, that people are supporting this development, instead of just having a hearing and saying people are supporting?
No, they had a good, they had a meeting, our county engineer, and then had a meeting...
The Point Clear Property Owners Association held a special meeting in the, at that church over there, what's that church called? That white church?
Presbyterian church, I'm not sure.
Anyway, and it was packed. It was packed. And this is, what we're doing right now is, is so that a development like this can happen, but this is not approving the development. And so, we made sure, because I was contacted, and they said, well, we want to make sure that we know what this is all about, and so it was packed out that night. And I think it was a very good meeting. Didn't hear anything negative. Everybody was just very thankful. Do you actually live in 26?
No, I live in Barnwell.
Then that might be why you, you know, because it was, it strictly only impacts District 26.
Well, I think it will impact all of Barnwell, but maybe that ordinance or that meeting just impacted, you know, that.
No, this is only for 26.
District 26, and changing the ordinance of that.
Because they have specifics for District 26.
Yeah, so my, I guess my...
So, it really don't affect any other district in the county?
Well, it does if you can change those ordinances that the people put together. So, I remember that there's been a very, you know, step-by-step playbook that the county planning puts out as far as how to create an ordinance, and the citizens put that together. So, with them doing that like step-by-step, and they're doing the ordinances, and then just have a meeting and saying they're in support, are the people from the ordinance, like the, the elected people that are on that district, are they supporting this as well?
Elected people?
Yeah, so when the district is created, there is, there's a committee.
District 26?
District 26 Board?
District 26.
Yes, District 26.
Oh, some of the original ones.
Well, District 26 was the original...
They were in 1990.
Zone District 4 from Ballin County.
They were the very first district that came under zoning.
So, they don't have the, they don't have the committee members on that district?
No.
There was somebody that met me coming out of that church and told me that they were the original people that were part of the zoning application, and they, this was like, how long ago has that been? Almost, say, 10, 20, 35, about 35 years ago? They were getting on up there. I mean, I'm those, I'm 57, and they were probably a good 30 years older than me, and they were telling me how that they were very appreciative that we took the time to reexamine this, but...
Yeah, I think everyone's appreciative of the communication. You know, everyone kind of wants to be included. This development's been very kind of hush-hush and not really talked about a whole lot, so I guess we're all just kind of eager to hear the details on it and hear of the support of the community.
That is after this, this, there will be.
Yes.
So, just stay tuned. We are very...
Yeah, we're definitely going to keep an eye on it.
We have everything posted. It's not, you know...
Yeah, I guess my, my point of being here is just want to understand where the, the citizens that develop these ordinance, how they are being affected.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
And just to clarify, in this specific case, this is the fifth public hearing we've had on this, so it's pretty widely known, yeah.
Is anything being documented, though? Like, it's just community support, so there's like surveys and things that are being...
Services, we got email support, yeah.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else? All right, I close the public hearing on this case.
I make a motion, we approve case TA 25-02.
I second it.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signed by by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Other staff recommendations? Public comments? Anybody sign up to speak at the public comment? All right, hearing none. Press questions? Anybody from the press? Nope. Commissioner comments?
I'll start.
Who goes first? Go ahead, Commissioner Ball.
Yes, so I attended one of the first of many graduation ceremonies last night at Ballin County High School, and I just wanted to, from, from this platform, say congratulations to all the 2025 graduates that are coming out this year. And I got this little saying that, that I've had for a long time, that I just would like to, if graduates are even watching these meetings, which I don't know, maybe they aren't, but it's just a graduation poem that's real short. It says, "Behind you all your memories, before you, all your dreams, around you, all who love you, within you, all you need." And so, that's just kind of like my parting quote for all the graduates. Some commissioners have the luxury of going to several commencement ceremonies because they've got a lot of schools in their district. I only have one, so it was a nice evening for that, and congratulations to those Tiger graduates, as well as all the Ballin County graduates from every school that you attend in this county. We are very proud of you and look forward to your future successes. Also, we're coming up on one of the most special days that I ever, I think they should have a month for this instead of a day for this, but it's called Memorial Day. It marks, I guess, start of summer for some people. It's the reason we get to have summers and vacations. A lot of people mix up Memorial Day with Veterans Day, and there's a quote that somebody came up with, a Korean War veteran, that says, "All gave some and some gave all." Veterans gave some, but Memorial Day's for people that gave it all. And so, I think that we should take the time to reflect going into next week, the freedoms that were given to us because of people who gave the ultimate sacrifice on the battle front for our country. Without that, we wouldn't be sitting up here. We wouldn't be having the meetings. We wouldn't be able to speak on our own behalf or in public. We could be under some other type of rule. So, always remember that freedom isn't always free, and next week, as everybody is grilling out and celebrating, take the time to just reflect the price that was paid so you could have the luxuries that we have. It was a lot. So, that's all that I have to say.
Mr. Underwood?
Ditto, everything he said, especially about Memorial Day. And also, congratulations to all the graduates. That is such a huge part of everybody's life. I always have fond memories, even though every year it gets further and further away from when I walked across that football field. I will tell you something funny about that, though. It was at Foley High School, 1985. Somebody didn't count the number of chairs, and so when the students got out there on the field, my last name starts with a U now, but it was a W then, about 10 of us didn't have a chair, and it caused a lot of giggling and funny, and knowing me, I like a good laugh. And so, we stood for quite a while until they brought us some chairs to sit in, so I haven't seen that happen ever since I've been attending high school ceremonies. But tonight, I'll be at Alberta. Alberta's in my district also, and we have a little bit of overlap in there, districts kind of, as far as where our students go to school. So, also, Robertstown tomorrow night. I don't get to attend Foley anymore because it conflicts with other nights, but I got to go to Foley for the all-female awards banquet the other night, and one of my good friends has been named the first female athletic director, Foley High School. So, congratulations to my friend, Meta Christensen. She's a little bit younger than me, her sister graduated with me, but man, she was, she was, had all the grit you can imagine when she would come in that gym. I was like a senior, and I think Meta was in like the eighth grade, and she'd be picking one-on-one competitions with us older girls, so she could show us out. But she's a perfect person for the job, and I'm proud of her. So, go Lions, always a Foley line. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Grish.
I want to thank the staff for getting the agenda together and so we could have this meeting. Also, you know, congratulate all the ones who received their certificate this morning for Employees of the Quarter. That was, you know, very, very impressive, you know, to be able to achieve that. And also, you know, we do need to remember that Memorial Day weekend is coming up, and it's like Mr. Ball said, this is to help celebrate the ones who gave all. You know, they made the ultimate sacrifice, that they knew that, you know, when they went into the service or whatever, that it could happen, and, you know, so we need to, you know, really honor them. You know, that's, we wouldn't be where we're at today if they hadn't have done what they done. And so, I just want to thank each and every one of them for that, and all the high school graduates, you know. Hope each one of y'all enjoy your time off this summer, and whatever you're going to do for next year, more than the years to come, your future, that you choose it wisely. And again, I think Alberta's got their graduation tonight, and so I'll be going to that one. My son-in-law is the principal there, and this will be his last graduating class. He is retiring himself.
That's nice.
So, as, you know, it's going to be a pretty good graduation there. So, again, thank each and every one of y'all for what you do, and thank the citizens for coming out and helping us look at these issues. It's very important that we get feedback from, from the public. Sometimes we've, the public feels like we don't adhere to what they're saying, but we also look at the big picture, you know, and trying to make sure that we do it right, and hopefully it's right. So, again, thank you very much.
All right, I just want to say thank you to all the staff for putting this together, so thank you. And thank you for the Ballin County School Board, and for the schools for reaching out and inviting us to the graduation, so thank you. I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, we are adjourned.